Ladies and gentlemen, if I can ask everybody to have a seat. Welcome Woodbury to your Village Board Meeting of April 10, 2025. It is an honor for me to introduce our Junior Deputy Mayor Noah in celebration of Autism Acceptance Month. This month is about bringing awareness. It's about genuine acceptance. It's about recognizing that inclusion means reaching out, listening deeply, and respecting every voice, spoken or unspoken. Communications in many forms are being non-speaking. Does not mean someone has nothing to say. We must expand how we listen and who we listen to. Noah is someone many of us know. We see him in our parks, our pools, our libraries. And everywhere he goes, he brings joy, honesty, and connection. He reminds us that being part of a community is not about changing who you are to fit in. It is about being embraced for exactly who you are. When I think about autism acceptance, I think about access, about designing spaces where neurodivergent individuals are not just included, but welcomed and valued. Acceptance means thinking critically about how our spaces, programs, and conversations can be more open, more flexible, and more human. Few years ago, I joined a group called Think Differently here in Orange County. It is a collective of passionate people who partner with local spaces to reduce stigma and create more inclusive environments. That work has taught me that I do not need to have all the answers. I do need to stay curious, stay open, and stay connected to self-advocates, caregivers, and educators who guide this journey. So when I present Noah today, I want you to know that this is not just a title or a token. Noah, you belong here, not in spite of anything, but because of everything you bring. Your presence makes our community stronger, and we are proud to learn from you, stand with you, and celebrate you. Thank you for being a bright part of Woodbury, Noah. We are better for you in it. So Noah, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Allegiance to the flag and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. All right. So Noah, thank you for doing a wonderful job with that. So I've got some things to present to you. And then I'm going to ask for your help for one more thing I have to do. First off. First off, I want to present you a certificate to you, okay? Wave at Maria. All right, so we can give this to your mom.
Thank you, go on.
And I've got this fire department T-shirt from you, from our fireman downstairs, for you, okay? And the Deputy Mayor has another T-shirt for you.
From one Deputy Mayor to another.
Okay, we'll see which one comes out first.
I can say would, out of shadow of the devil, your grandfather is very proud of you.
Thank you, gotcha. Thank you very much.
All right, Noah, you can help me with this. Okay. So I have one more presentation to make, and this is not something we do very often. It's the key to the Village of Woodbury. And I have not given it out very often, but tonight we're going to give it out. Noah's going to help me present it. But let me start by reading who it's for, okay? Phil Morello Sr. was born in the South Bronx. He lived with his parents and his three siblings in a five-story... Come here, come sit with me. There we go. I'll start again. Phil Morello Sr. was born in the South Bronx. We will not hold that against him as a Yankee fan. He lived with his parents and three siblings in a five-story walk-up on the fifth floor in a one-bedroom apartment. In fifth grade, his family moved to the Wagner Projects in East Harlem. He graduated from Samuel Goppers High School with a diploma in electronics. Both Philip and his twin brother were drafted on the same day in January 1966. His brother went to Fort Dix and after advanced training, went to the 173rd Airborne Division in Vietnam. Phil began his service with the U.S. Army in Fort Jackson, South Carolina, and received orders to Fort Bliss, Texas Air Defense School. After five months, he graduated and became a Hawk Missile Technician. He was then stationed in Okinawa in Japan. He was responsible for maintaining, repairing, and launching Hawk missiles for 17 months. While serving in his country, he was awarded with the Expert Medal for the Hawk Missiles and an M-14 Rifle, National Defense Service, and a Good Conduct Medal. He rose to the rank of Specialist Fifth Class. In 1970, Mr. Morello returned home to the Bronx and married the lovely Rose Marie. They moved to Woodbury and raised their family in 1974. They were fortunate to pick Woodbury, where they raised their five children. And as I said to Rose Marie earlier, there probably wasn't a lot on television, so they just had a lot of kids. Okay? Philip, Phil was a Little League manager for the Woodbury Little League for 25 years. He spent 38 years working on the Memorial Day Parade and almost three decades as the exclusive chairperson of that parade. He has been a commander of the Woodbury Post 779. In addition, and honestly, very important, he's been advocating for his fellow veterans, combat veterans, et cetera, and their families for decades. So it gives me a great pleasure, and it's an honor for me and my Deputy Mayor for today to present you, Phil Morello Sr., with the Key to the Village of Woodbury. Congratulations.
Mayor? Mayor?
Here's a... Phil, say something.
Say something.
You surprised me, I can tell you that.
That was the idea, that's why there's a bunch of Morelos here. Everybody put your wallets in the front pockets, there's a Morelos in here.
I wish to thank everyone. It was a pleasure whatever I did, I loved it. I had to stop after a while, but I really didn't want to stop. I tried, but sometimes you have to move on. And I love Woodbury. We came here in '74. I lived in my house for 50 years. I'm married, next month we'll be married, 55 years.
She's right in front of me. I'm the one who's probably been drinking here.
And I thank everyone for... I thank you guys, you surprised me. I thank you very much.
Should I take a picture?
Yes, please.
The official photographer of the Village of Woodbury.
Can you jump over your table?
Stay as long behind me, long past you. All right, with all that said, we have a meeting to attend to, so... Yeah, anybody, listen, if you want to leave and don't want to stay for this, I get it, I will not take it personal.
They're all leaving, Phil.
Don't leave, all the plants will die! He is fantastic. Yeah. Phil, we'll talk, Phil. Oh, and I forgot to mention that the Hudson Valley Honor Flight. Hey, Phil? He knows. Yeah. I know, I'm not... Let it go. Yes.
Do I have to take any more pictures? I'm done. Noah is...
Leaving? Yeah. That would make some sense. My mouth gets so fucking dry. Where's Bernie? Do you want this? I just may put that as my board, not my board comments, the newsletter. Did he do a good job helping me with the... His grandfather I knew, me and Vic knew through the nights. Yeah, it was Michelle, Michelle made it up. Oh, and hey, your friend requests. Okay. Now the fun's over. Let's get down to serious village business. Okay, so we have a public hearing to go over for fiscal year 2025, 2026, preliminary budget public hearing. A public hearing is being held to entertain public comments on fiscal year 2025, 2026 preliminary budget. The salaries of elected officials as noticed are as follows. The mayor is $36,000, which means I'm making about three cents an hour to do this. Good job for you guys. Each trustee is $8,000. The public notice was printed in the Times-Herow Record on April 3, 2025. And now we go out to the public for comment. Ed, you're breaking the building, buddy.
Andrew.
All right, anyone in the public wishing to speak?
Mayor Jack Kamaza. You mentioned the salary was 36, I think you're 42 actually still, unless we load it back down.
Forty-two, that's what I got, okay. Four cents an hour, ladies and gentlemen, four cents an hour. Okay, anyone in the public, back row first. Next, row before that, I can't even count. And the row before that. And the row before that. Okay, no one in the public wishes to speak on it, going once, going twice. Okay, can I have a motion in a second to close the public hearing? Do I have a second? All in favor? Aye. Now, can I have a motion in a second to adopt the budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026 and to direct the village clerk to print a copy of the budget in the minutes of this meeting? I'll make the motion. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, and she's going to do a roll call.
Trustee Fryban, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustee Fabro?
Aye.
Trustee Suriello?
Aye.
Trustee Ferrelli?
Aye.
Mayor Jacob Madoff?
Aye.
Done. So before I go any further, I just want to thank the village treasurer, who spent hours upon hours upon hours, and she let us know every hour that she spent on it. Okay? Over and over again, I want to thank our department heads for all their hard work on this, except for Rob Wine, yes, all the clerks that also worked on this as well. We're in good shape.
I would thank the board for holding a really good work session and... knowing who the budget is about.
And we are under the tax cap, ladies and gentlemen. So it's that part of the program where we talk about public comment on agenda items only. So the agenda is on the table on the side. If anybody has anything to discuss about agenda items only, speak now or forever hold your peace. Once, twice, okay. Administrative business, can I have a motion in a second to accept receipt of the minutes of the meeting held on March 26, 2025?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
All second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Village Clerk McLennan, will you please read abstract 20?
Abstract 20, Inspectors 2425, 2354, 2455, 3445, and total $735,420 and $48,000.
Can I have a motion in a second to approve abstract 20 as read?
Motion.
I'll make that motion, a second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Those Morelos tearing up the best of you? Is that what's going on out there? All right, closing of ESCO, return to balance. Can I have a motion in a second to close Planning Board ESCO for 24, Laura Lane, and 5 First Avenue? Both applicants have withdrawn their applications, and all consultant fees have been paid.
Motion.
Make the motion.
I got a motion by trustee Suriello, second by trustee Ferrelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Budget modification for the Fire Department. Can I have a motion in a second to approve the following budget modifications as presented for the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget to equip the new ladder truck and to replace some general rescue equipment? This modification will also account for the shared increase cost with the town of Woodbury for the dictaphone lease. The total modification is for $17,366 and will result in a zero increase and decrease in the overall operating budget of the Fire Department. So can I have a motion in a second to approve all that?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I have seven Fire Department equipment requests. We are condensing them down into one speech. So can I have a motion in a second to approve Fire Department equipment request nine through 15 of 2025 for the purchase of general rescue and ice rescue equipment totaling $67,950.90?
All motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Suriello. All in favor?
I had a question on the ice rescue equipment. It seems to me that we've already did a number of purchases of that equipment this year. Am I incorrect?
I did speak to the fire chief about that. Those, the previous equipment requests that you approved, the prices were more, so they voided that equipment request, and they submitted this one at a lower price.
So this is a replacement?
This is a replacement of the previous one.
Thank you.
Okay, slate of offices for the Fire Department. Can I have a motion in a second to accept one-year term of offices for the Fire Company? Car 1, Christopher Burke. Car 2, Scotty McLennan Jr. And car 3 is Brian Wallace. Make that motion.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And just on behalf of the board, I want to thank these gentlemen for their continued service to our community. Okay, old business. Schedule public hearing to introduce ILL 5 of 2025, rescind Local Law 2 of 2025 Tax Cap Override. So... No, this is the tax cap. Well, I'm going to introduce it, right?
And schedule the public hearing.
And schedule the public hearing. I got that. Worded funny. Yeah, but that's not how I read it, yeah. All right, can I have a motion in a second to introduce introductory Local Law 5 of 2025? A local law repealing Local Law 2 of 2025 entitled... Well, now it's entitled Tax Cap Override. So can I have a motion in a second to introduce Local Law 5 of 2025?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, can I have a motion in a second to schedule a public hearing to entertain public comments on introductory Local Law 5 of 2025 to be held on April 25 at 7:30 PM?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Seconded by trustee Suriello, all in favor? Fourth, what did I say?
Twenty-five.
Hey, stop pointing out my mistakes. I know, it's even when I'm right, I'm wrong. All right, can I have a motion to... Do I have a motion in a second? Do I have a motion in a second? Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now it's time to authorize me to sign stuff. So can I have a motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign utility and telecommunications agreement Troy and Banks?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
I have a question. The agreement provides for their share of 33%. And I checked with one other company that I know of that does this. There's actually three public utility consultants. And that seems higher than most, usually it's 20... The two that I talked to were 25%. Have we gone out for quotes for other utility consultants?
We did not solicit this. This company reached out to us to see if we wanted it to be done. We had it done about 10, 15 years ago. It resulted in zero, because everything was done correctly. They also wanted to actually do our Cable Vision, but our Cable Vision has a clause in it, it can only go back one year. So you don't have to approve it, it's zero cost to us either way. So it's up to y'all.
Well, it's a cost if they do find some...
If they do find money, then they keep 33% and we get the 67%. I don't know whether they'll find money or not. Like I said, the last time we had it done, they didn't find money. When I wore my other hat with the town and we had it done, they didn't find money there either, so... It's quite possible they'll find nothing.
They've done it twice with no positive results.
I'm sorry?
They've done it twice with no positive results.
Correct.
Maybe that's another reason to...
Well, or we're being billed correctly. And hey, yay utility companies.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but there's there are several different things other than just looking at the billing aspect of the utility bills. It's the way the bills are classified.
Sure. So like I said, they solicited us, I put it on for your entertainment.
I'm just suggesting we get at least two more quotes to see what kind of, what the range of services that are offered.
Please feel free to have them forward that to me.
I got a motion in a second, all in favor? Aye. Is everybody asleep?
Aye.
All right. Waiver permit fee request, Town of Woodbury fireworks. Can I motion in a second to approve the waiver of all fees associated with fireworks display hosted by the Town of Woodbury on July 5, 2025?
Make the motion.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
See, I'm going to have to start at the end of the meetings with the Key to the Village, because everybody just falls asleep. All right, fee request, Town of Woodbury food trucks. Can I have a motion in a second to approve the waiver of all fees associated with food trucks at the Town of Woodbury Parks for the 2025 summer season?
All motion?
Trustee Fabro, I'll give it to trustee Fabro, seconded by trustee Suriello. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Schedule interviews for the Planning and Zoning Boards, starting at 6 PM on April 24, 2025. So can I have a motion in a second to schedule a special meeting to be held on April 24, 6 PM to schedule interviews for candidates who submitted letters of interest to serve on the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving right along. So Lincoln Water Bills, Consolidated Water Fund. Okay, can I have a motion in a second to approve the following resolution as presented for the levy of 852 delinquent water bills from the Consolidated Water Fund that totaled $326,755.60? The complete list can be found in the village clerk's office.
Motion.
Do I have a second? Second. Jessica with the roll call.
Trustee Fryban, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustee Fabro?
Aye.
Trustee Suriello?
Aye.
Trustee Ferrelli?
Aye.
Mayor Jacob Madoff?
Aye.
Okay. Now we have Water Fund 6, Am Door Park. Can I have a motion in a second to approve the following resolution for the levy of 27 delinquent water bills from the Water Number 6 Fund, Am Door Park, that totaled $4,538.30? Complete list, once again, can be found in the village clerk's office. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call once again?
Trustee Fryban, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustee Fabro?
Aye.
Trustee Suriello?
Aye.
Trustee Ferrelli?
Aye.
Mayor Jacob Madoff?
Aye.
Okay. Re-leve your previously exempt properties. So we do this periodically, so can I have a motion in a second to adopt the following resolution as presented to re-leve a prorated tax amount due on properties located at various locations that were previously eligible for an exemption?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, I'll give it to trustee Fabro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, schedule a public hearing for introductory Local Law 6 of 2025 that Kelly's entitled PB Copies. Woo-hoo! Can I get a motion in a second to introduce introductory Local Law 6 of 2025, amending 310 zoning and Chapter A 314 Architectural Review Board Rules of the Code of the Village of Woodbury to revise the submission requirements of the Planning Board and the Architectural Review Board? Motion. I'll second it.
Question?
Okay.
The language of that, I just was actually looking for an explanation of why it was reduced, but then it leaves it up to the building inspector to set a number. Is there any limit to that?
Well, primarily, the Planning Board doesn't want hard copies anymore, but there's one copy that's required for the... So that's pretty much why it's changing, instead of having to submit 15 copies or four copies anymore.
I understand, but I just wondered, because it does say for the building inspector, he can set the number if he wants more.
Well, additional copies can be required by the Building Department, and that's for, like, if the Orange County Planning Department requires a hard copy, they've only done... that on occasion, now that they've switched to electronic, but they have asked for some. Or if, you know, a board member wants a particular piece in hard copy, then the building department can ask for that. But that way, we have that ability to get that.
But it wouldn't be a number greater than the previous number.
Oh, no. Nobody really wants the hard copy anymore.
Yes. Thank you.
Yep. But they have to ask that.
Unless you enjoy laser fishing. All right. I have a motion in a second. Do I have an all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Can I have a motion and a second to refer introductory Local Law 6 of 2025 to the county and the village planning board?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, can I get a motion in a second to schedule a public hearing to entertain public comments on introductory Local Law 6 of 2025 to be held on May 8th, 2025 at 7:30 PM? Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have an all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If it's May 8th. I thought it was May 7th.
No, it's May 8th.
Let me double check. No, May 8th.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we have an extra item tonight. And it's unfortunate that it was, it had to appear on social media before I had a chance to discuss this. I am not going to discuss it very much, but today we received, the village and the town, the supervisors here with me, received a petition from Curious Joel to annex Ace Farms or land thereof into Curious Joel. Now, I don't have much information to share on this because we just got it today, so there's really not much for me to go over with this. I am going to have a meeting with the supervisor or our very, our attorneys to go over this tomorrow, to speak about it further, but I did say a couple of weeks ago that this was coming, and it's here. So, like I said, there's not much I can speak on it, but what I am going to do right now is ask for a motion in a second to declare our intent to serve as lead agency on this matter. So if I can get a motion in a second to move that along?
Motion.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion.
Okay.
So, before we move forward with this declaring of lead agency, I know in the past the town and the village have hired various different lawyers. I think, just going back to the water pipeline that was put in, we had, you know, environmental lawyers and I think like some type of special counsel. This was back when I was in high school, so forgive me if I don't have it entirely correct. Do we want to have a joint public hearing with the town and the village? Or we're just gonna take charge here?
Joint public hearings are required as part of the annexation process. It is too premature to hold a joint public hearing at this time under Article 17.
Thank you.
I also feel it's premature to enter into a declaration of lead agency. The, there are prerequisites in terms of paperwork, in terms of notification of other involved or potential agencies as a coordination letter, not a lead agency declaration.
I disagree, actually. I think this is the precise time that seeker states that seeker should be initiated.
I disagree because the seeker statute is quite clear on a coordination letter.
I agree that seeker is quite clear.
The coordination letter is to determine who should be the lead agency.
No, well, we disagree.
All right. I have a motion in a second. Do I have an all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Two at the end?
Nay.
Nay.
That ends that. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, that's all village business for this evening. Now we go to our favorite part of the program, which is public comment on anything at all. Anything. Going once. Not gonna beg.
You're going up.
You're going up!
You're going up.
Lisa Hints? Highland Mills? Excuse me. So, excellent job on all of your awards and pledge of allegiance. That was awesome. Mr. Murillo is still out there, probably very excited. He was so surprised. So, good job. Today is, or this month is actually also National Volunteer Appreciation Month, and I wanted to, as the climate smart person, take some opportunities and a microphone to thank everybody that assists with all the endeavors that I know our committee takes on. We just recently had a repair cafe with nine volunteers. We were able to fix 43 items and only three items were, we actually ended up taking them over to Rob's Electronic Shred. Also, our flash trash mobs are going pretty well. Those are all volunteer run. In three hours, we've collected about 50 bags. We've got another one going this Saturday, starting at 12 o'clock back over at Troutbrook. There's some sections over there that are really still pretty bad. Our climate smart team, of course, everybody that helps with the gardens, I appreciate. Everybody that assists with Rees Across America. I can't do it without volunteers, so this is a great month to thank everybody. Also, with that said, this Saturday, Cornell Cooperative Extension is doing a Keystone lecture, Keystone plants, our foundation plants. So it's only an hour. Come on out. And also, we have our, I wanted to thank Rob for our flash trash mob. Every time I just send him a couple of pictures, I'm like, hey, we left crap here and there. And he picks it up, so I appreciate that. He gives us the supplies, the bags, so thank you very much. Desiree, I had to thank you. You helped us get the grant for the New York State Forestry Council. That's the money that we will be able to plant two trees, so thank you. It wasn't a huge grant, but, you know, we get to plant a couple of trees. We're still doing our Trex collection for anybody that knows. That's the plastic wrap, the plastic film. There's a location here, Town Hall, Aldi's. And Jay's is currently put away while they're remodeling, but then at the senior center. So we continue, everything we collect, they calculate for us, and we get a free bench every year. The bench this year is going over to the Smiths' Clover Elementary School along with a tree. So they're very appreciative of that. So that'll be good. Food scraps, we're gonna start that again at the Smiths' Clover Elementary, May 15th, starting, that's a Wednesday. We do it from 5:00 to 6:00. All those food scraps go over to Jones Farms, and we, we help lower our carbon emissions. So thank you for that. Lastly, our Monroe Woodbury Sustainability. You guys have heard us talk about that. We're connected with the high school. They appreciate this. We've got one more lecture on May 15th. Not that you guys want to attend, but you could if you wanted to. But they are also asking us to work on a fast fashion, so the kids are wise to these quick fashions of sheen and all those cheap quality stuff. So we were lucky, we'll probably find somebody for next year to, to get that done. And then lastly, I just wanted to come to my attention that the mayor, Tara and CJ, you guys have had a petition against your signatures. I wanted to let you know, without you guys being on the board when you were, this committee and the stuff that we pulled together would not have happened. So although that's been done to you, it is not a representation of our committee, myself or anybody that appreciates what you've done for us. So I wanted to thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak?
Hi, Kate Luciani, Highland Mills. I just want to thank everybody here tonight. We did get, you know, this information today around 12:00 noon. The mayor and I spoke on the phone several times about this, and I just want everybody in the public to know that we are taking this very seriously. And I want to thank Attorney Norton for setting up a Zoom call for tomorrow with my attorney so we can all sit down and figure out, you know, how we're gonna go about this together. You know, I've spoken to my whole board, and, you know, we're on the same page, and I'm looking forward to all of us being able to come together and handle it exactly the right way. So I just wanted to thank everybody and, you know, social media stinks sometimes. People put things out there, and unfortunately, it gets out there before we even get, be able to grab ahold of it and actually read through everything and all the documents. So I just want the community to know that we are paying attention to it, and, you know, we won't be answering on social media, especially since, you know, we don't have everything right now, but we will be getting together to discuss this and handle it perfectly. So I just want to thank everybody.
Thank you. Okay.
Jackie, Jackie Hernandez, Highland Mills. I'm sorry, I know, I keep, there we go. I think I got it. There we go.
He goes through that with that mic.
I want to, I know. I wanted to, just to thank the board as far as sharing what information's going on with regards to our community. I think, I think as, as, you know, we, you know, it's the, it's the words that I don't think any of us wanted to hear, but we knew. It was, it was that 10-year mark, right? So I really look forward to hearing the plan that you guys have. On a brighter note, the Upper Room Youth Center will be hosting a three-on-three tournament. This is a fundraiser. It's, the Upper Room is a nonprofit, 100% volunteer, and this tournament is hopefully going to get members of the community out. So youth, adults are all encouraged to come out to play. So if you want to register, please see us on our, on our Facebook page. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacqueline. Anyone else? Slowly she turns, step by step. It's like waiting on Neil Cross to get to the dais. Cody?
Maria Hunter. I just want to publicly thank Bobby Blair for all the work, hard work that he's been doing at Oak Clover. I do have people coming up thanking me, and I keep telling them, no, you need to thank Bobby Blair. He's with the village, and I'm working with him, but he is doing all the hard work with him and his wife. So I truly want everyone to know, it's Bobby Blair that's doing the heavy work down at Oak Clover. That's all.
Yeah, but Bobby wants that.
I know.
You know, you know Bobby.
I know Bobby very well. I've known him for way too long, but...
You want to talk about anything on Memorial Day Parade?
Memorial Day Parade?
Speak now or forever hold your peace.
All right. Memorial Day Parade is...
Memorial Day?
It's on Sunday. What the heck date is this? It's the 25th.
I threw you for...
May 25th. It's gonna start at 12:00. We're starting an hour earlier.
Ooh.
So I'm, I'm working on the book. I'm trying to pull it all together, hopefully in the next week or so. And Rob, I'll be working very hard on my trailer for the, this year we're gonna be having a, with the highway department's lead, we're gonna have a trailer to have the men and women who are with the legion to be on the trailer so they don't have to walk. So I feel this is a better way for us to have the parade, and it's a safer way to go forward, so. All right?
There you go. Thank you, Maria. Mr. Keller?
Totally. We always save the best to last.
Well, your wife is not up there, though.
All right. I just want to touch on one thing. I don't know if anybody knows about Honor Flight. That also adds into what Phil was here for.
Yep.
Honor Flight is where they take all the veterans, and they get the day, and they get to go to Washington, DC. Okay? Phil will be going on that trip Saturday. Okay? Anybody that wants to see what this trip is all about, 6:30 in the morning at the airport or eight, yeah, 8:00 at night on the way home. Karen will also be going with one of the local veterans as a chaperone. It is, if you don't know what it is, you don't have any, I don't know what the word is, but you will walk out of there with a different attitude on the spirit of this country and these veterans. It changes your whole outlook on everything. Phil is gonna have the time of his life, I can promise you. He has no idea what he's in store for. None of these guys do. If you know anybody, any veteran, World War II especially, because they're starting to dwindle out, they're at that age. I'm sad my father would never go. But World War II veterans, we need them. Vietnam is starting to go, Korea too. We need to get them out. But please, come down to the airport. If you know a veteran, they'll have the applications there. Take an application. Get involved. Find out what this is all about. It will change your outlook on everything. I can promise you, you will have the day of your life.
Thank you, John. Thank you, John. Anyone else? Going once, going twice. Anybody? All right. Department comments, starting with the man who has so much to add to all conversation.
You got nothing.
See, we were about to give you a mic, thinking you had something huge to say. John?
No.
No?
No.
Rob?
No. That was good.
I'm good. I'm good.
Uh, no, really? Really? Okay. You?
I'm quite curious as to how this post on Facebook occurred today when the only individuals who were aware of the annexation petition being served were the people who work for both municipalities. My understanding is it's on a Facebook page called Welcome to Woodbury Hudson Valley or something, and I think one of the town council people is an admin on that, as well as another resident in Woodbury, but it was posted anonymously. So it'd be interesting to know who actually posted the information and how they were made aware of it before the attorney was able to speak to this board, and I don't know whether the town board attorney had an opportunity to speak to their board.
Yeah.
So, that's my comment.
Kelly, anything? Jessica? All right. Going out to board comments. We'll start at the far end today with trustee Fryban.
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Okay. Trustee Fabro?
I'd just like to echo some things we started the meeting with. Congratulations to Phil Morello and his award and our new deputy mayor. The Honor Flight's a great thing. I haven't had the chance to personally attend, but I know many folks around the county who have had, and it's a great thing that really brings our county together with supporting our veterans. Lisa covered most of the climate smart stuff, so I'm not gonna reiterate all that, but we did have a very successful repair cafe, and thank you to Rob for all the help with recycling some of the junk that we collected in TVs and things like that. We also have, yeah, I'm, well, we, I'll just remind you anyway. We have the cleanup, please come. We're gonna be doing them hopefully each weekend, and like Lisa said, we're going up Troutbrook this time on Troutbrook Road. That's on Sunday, right, Lisa? Saturday, sorry. My bad. Saturday, 12:00. And we're doing that time every day, or every weekend going forward. 12:00, Saturdays are actually uptime. One more thing, I'm sorry. I'm struggling to remember here. Might come back to me. On to Sue.
I have one thing. And on Monday, we had a little road trip, and we went to Cooperstown, New York, where Lisa Hints was awarded the Levine Community Service Award. The award was brought to my attention, and I wrote her a letter to the New York Planning Board Federation, and was very excited to see that she was selected. It was just a letter. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but it just spoke about how Lisa has proven herself as an extraordinary asset to our community. Her standing leadership, tireless dedication, and deep passion for improving Woodbury sustainability and community engagement made her the ideal candidate for this award. So, congratulations, Lisa. It was nice to go and have lunch and enjoy the, watching you get the award. Did you bring the plaque?
Did you bring the plaque? What?
Well, she got a lovely plaque.
All right. Deputy Mayor?
Okay. I just want to pick up where John left off on the Honor Flight. I'm gonna be attending a big fundraiser for the Honor Flight on Saturday night, through the Knights of Columbus. And I do get involved with the Honor Flight through the Knights of Columbus. And I just wanted to give you the cost breakdown of that flight. The veterans fly for free. The total cost per flight is $130,000 for the day. And that's, it's $96,000 per flight out of Stewart. It's $88,000 out of Westchester. It's $9,000 for the flight bus for transportation when they land in DC. It's $500 per guardian fee. It's $38,000 per mission to help offset flight costs. It costs them $3,500 for breakfast, $3,000 for lunch, $13,000 for dinner. It's $1,500 total flight day cost per veteran. There's zero government funding. This whole thing is sponsored through donations. So, that's, everybody needs to know that. This whole thing is sponsored by donations. $130,000 a flight, and they do four flights a year, two out of Westchester, two out of Stewart. Having said that, and the Honor Flight, and I just want to, you know, everything that John said, I just want to just back it up 100%, because if you haven't been there, you haven't seen these veterans. I've seen veterans come off that plane in tears because of what they saw during that flight. It's incredible what these people do. And I'm gonna see a lot of those leaders on Saturday night. So, anyway, one other thing I want to talk about. A couple of months ago, we lost our mayor, Mike Queenen. And I did a lot of board comments on him. So, I'm not gonna rehash everything I said that night. But what I do want to do tonight is I want to thank Mayor Jacamata and village clerk, Jessica, make sure I get your name right. I don't want to be like, he did it. And behind you, we have, we renamed the conference room, Mike Queenen Conference Room.
Hey, Ed, could you kick that door open? Yeah? There's two heads back there. I'm sorry.
Yeah. So, I want to thank them for turning the conference room into the Mike Queenen Conference Room. And here's a picture of him in there. It's a nice picture of him with a plaque in the back. So, take some time out on your way out to look at it. It's a great honor for a good man who did a lot for the village of Woodbury. And that's all I have to say tonight. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. So, I do want to just piggyback on what Sue said about Lisa. I think she is just absolutely a rock star. The trip up was, was great. Sue Sariello does not have her son's singing voice, but when, damn, when she kicked into Old McDonald's, that was just something else. But it is a big honor to receive this community award from the Planning Federation for New York State. We also had put in our planning board chair for the same award, which he did get honorable mention, Chris Gerver. So, but he lost out to a guy who has been on his planning board in Reinbeck for 40 years. Okay? I can't even imagine that. So, but Lisa, you absolutely deserve it. I'm so happy that somebody won that award here. I just want to just touch on, because Noah's not here now, but this, that was a big thing for Noah to have to do. Okay? I do not, my wife has worked with special needs kids. She was the first person I ever heard autism from, way back when, when she was studying it in St. John's University. So, it takes a lot of courage. And his parents and his teachers worked with him to be here today, and he just did a bang-up job. So, I just want to thank him. I also want to just touch on Phil Morello. We do not give out this key to the village very often, but it's very hard to find somebody as deserving as Phil. His health is not great, but for 30 years, he has been the chairman, almost 30 years, of that Memorial Day Parade, who he handed over to Maria, handed the keys over two years ago. But it was an honor for me, more so, I think, than Phil, for me to be able to present it to him. So, I do want to just thank Phil for allowing me to do that for him. Even though he had no clue we were doing it for him, he just showed up. And he, he had to see all his kids and everybody else here, so knew something was going on. Anyway, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna speak too much about this annexation. Like I said, the, when we had a meeting with the Orange County exec, Steve Newhouse, a few weeks ago, he had let me know it was coming. And then I let the public know during our meeting that this would be coming. I just didn't expect it to come so soon. So, once again, this is going to be a community effort with this. It will not be a decision that one or the other board makes. It'll be where the community kind of helps us come to a decision here. So, I will keep you in the loop with everything that goes on. We will let you know. But like the supervisor said, we just received this today at noon. Okay? So, right now, my attorney really hasn't had a lot of time to review it. I am a little PO'd that it wound up on social media, because it shouldn't have been on social media yet. I wanted this night to strictly be about, I was going to bring it up, but I wanted it to be about Noah and Phil. And then we have this. And I have received a boatload of text messages, and it's a group that I am not in. So, I don't know. I, somebody tagged me in it. I didn't see the tag. But once again, there'll be more information forthcoming. Okay? And I think everybody knows me, I'm pretty transparent with this stuff in general. So, you will be in the know, so to speak. That's all I got. All right? Hearing no further comments from the public. Can I have a motion and a second to adjourn this meeting?
Couldn't we just do a reminder, too? I remembered what it was for the Easter icon?
No, 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 no. Anyway, I got a mo, can I get a motion in a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our next scheduled meeting is April 24, 2025. Until then, remember, Chuck Norris can make fire by rubbing two ice cubes together. No!